Geez, are we getting close? Yeah, we're getting close.
I'd like to convene the city council meeting for April 4th. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
End the roll.
Belzak?
Here.
Gustafson?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Clistic?
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum that takes us to questions and comments of announcements of a general nature. This is on our agenda for an individual who might want to speak to something that is not on the agenda. Somebody might want to share something. So we inserted this on our agenda. Does anyone have anything other than an item on our agenda that they want to address tonight? Okay. It takes us to approval of minutes, and I'm going to ask for one motion for all three sets of minutes. We have the Administrative Finance Committee meeting of the whole for February 23rd, the Administrative Finance Committee meeting of the whole for March 1st, and the city council meeting for March 21st, 2022. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, second by Alderman Kenny. Any questions or comments? If done, the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The amendments have been approved. That takes us to receiving of communications. Do we have any communications from the Alderman? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two pieces of communication. I have one from Mr. Jack Quinert on Summit Road regarding the item on our agenda tonight for the municipal services, option one. He felt that spending the money on option two was not a good idea. He was preferring option one. And then I also have a communication from a Mr. Michael Muehlner, who lives in unincorporated Downers Grove Township regarding a Farmingdale signed, and he'd liked the city during the help. That's not in our jurisdiction. I did have that conversation with him.
Thank you. Anyone else? Eric?
Yeah, I have just a couple items. The first is, I had some emails regarding issues with LRS carts. I passed those on to Brian, and the team took care of those right away. So that's very much appreciated. The other one is, I did have a communication with a resident in Green Valley, where I performed a site visit with reps from Nycor, the resident Dan Gomback, to go over, Nycor had done some work on their property, cutting some trees down, and there's now some minor maintenance work that needs to be done. So Nycor was out there, and they committed to getting that work done in the very near term. So I appreciate Dan coming out with his time and stuff to expedite the process.
Thank you.
Nycor is very good about it.
Alderman, Chris- uh, Chris?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I received a communication from Megan Hofbier from the patio homes about noise cue bars. Just wanted to mention that it was quiet for a while, but it came up as an issue. I told her, just contact police if it's loud again.
Okay. Anyone else? If no one else, then that takes us to our mayor's report. First item under our mayor's report is the recognition of the Women's Club art program. And while this is on our agenda tonight, and I do congratulate the Women's Club for all their efforts for their art program, it's really here as a pretense for getting someone here tonight. So I'm going to jump to the Heart of Darien Award. "When the pandemic threatened the Darien Women's Club's art fair, 46-year tradition, this individual was determined to provide a healing experience for artists, essential workers, and the community. The 'We Heart Our Heroes' project connected Darien Women's Club members with Darien residents and provided an opportunity to thank and recognize our community heroes. Eight three-feet-by-six-feet composites with over 500 artful messages of gratitude were used to construct large and meaningful pieces of art." If you see our back wall, one of them is hanging there from our back wall. We also have one upstairs in our lobby. "The artwork quilts have been displayed at the 9/11 Remembrance Day Memorial, as well as the, in our Darien Center Hall, the Indian Prairie Library, schools, and various other locations. As a permanent gift to the city of Darien, they have also become part of the Darien Historical Society's pandemic archives. Our nominee envisioned an art experience which recognized first responders while giving our residents an opportunity to express gratitude through creative art expression. Her dedication to keeping the Darien Women's Club art tradition alive while adapting the COVID restrictions showed strong determination and a generous and caring spirit for the entire Darien community. In conclusion, she successfully directed the 'We Heart Our Heroes' project during the pandemic and recently chaired an outstanding in-person Darien Women's Club art fair. She has shown a strong commitment to the arts in Darien with her hard work, creativity, and dedication. By her efforts, she has shared part of her heart with our Darien community and is with great pride that we honor Ann Christensen with this Heart of Darien Award."
Surprise, surprise!
It says, "Darien, Illinois, Heart of Darien, Ann Marie Christensen, We Heart Our Heroes Program, April 4th, 2022."
Just say okay. You want to borrow my camera?
That's what I did a lot.
And then I'm going to ask all the Women's Club ladies to come up if you guys are good.
Come on, guys, please.
Okay, ladies, head on up.
Hi, how are you doing, everybody?
Stand in a bit.
Come on up, please.
Your mind is better than your blue shirt, now.
Good to see you. Hey, there, lady, how are you? Hey, Mayor, good to see you.
How are you?
How are you? Hey, how are you? Good.
Jerry, come on, sit up there. Come on.
I'm taller than us right now.
Good idea.
It's okay, I'm the photographer.
Hold on, Mary, hold on, hold on. You got one more running in. Tallest one in front.
I should try to do a selfie so that I'm in it? One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome. Congratulations.
Hi, how are you?
Good, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, city. Joe. Friends, you realize that this was really more of a way of keeping myself busy during the pandemic and, and out of my kids' hair, out of my husband's hair. But it was really important that we do something to uphold our tradition, because it's always been really important to me, and I know that a lot of people have stepped up in the past when we couldn't find a chair, or if we just, you know, became a little weak of spirit. And I think the show this year and the art fair was really kind of indicative of how important it is to everybody else in the community. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed for a couple other things that might be coming our way. And I know I won't be chairing it next year, but I definitely still will be very involved. Again, thank you very much.
You know, you know, and I called, I called Bill up, Bill up, and I said, "We have to get her here." And I had to come up with something that I thought, when you saw your fellow Women's Club members here, you would understand. And so we came up with this idea of, "We're going to honor the Women's Club for their art program." And you guys really do have a fantastic art program, so I don't want to diminish that. But it was really our way of getting you here tonight. I had called them, and I said, "Bill," I said, "I have something very important coming up. In two weeks, I will call you and let you know," because I hadn't received the nomination, but I knew I was going to get the nomination. And so give him a lot of credit for getting you here tonight, and thank you to the Women's Club for all you do. Not just with your art program, but with all your other programs. Thank you. All right. Now we have the mass exodus. All right. Tonight, we have another commendation. And I'm going to let the Chief Thomas do this. This is for Brian and Christina Payne. Is Brian here tonight? Brian? Why don't you come forward, Brian? And I'm going to let the Chief make that presentation. Christina, couldn't be with us tonight?
She is probably on her way.
Okay.
Should we wait a little bit, Joe, so if maybe?
Do we want, we can wait. Okay, why don't we do that, Chief, and then what we'll do is, we'll have Katie and we'll have George present. All right, with us tonight, we have Katie Murray, who is the Municipal Services Manager for LRS, and George Strom, who is the VP of Municipal Services. And as you know, over the last couple of weeks, we've been making the transition from Waste Management to LRS. Five, six months ago, when we started this process, we felt really positive about this company. We felt that what they were going to be able to do for us was present excellent service for our residents. Five months later, I don't feel any different than I did then, even though we've had a little, a couple faux pas over the last couple of weeks. But I, I really think that the company's excellent, the customer service is excellent, and I think that the fact that we've had such a good relationship with the two of you really speaks to the quality of LRS. So I'll turn the microphone over to you, and I'll let you make your little talk.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for your time tonight. And I, I just want to say first and foremost, you know, I've rolled out quite a few municipalities and new services, and I've really grown to appreciate not only each of you, but also the Darien residents are just awesome. Because, you know, this is, transitions like this, they happen every, you know, 15 to 30 years, and it's uncomfortable. I mean, especially for some residents that may have disabilities or, you know, just like routine. And so we're disrupting your routine temporarily to exchange, you know, close to 20,000 carts, as the mayor pointed out. And overall, it's gone very well. We're very, very happy with, it's not been perfect, of course, and I'll address that. But, you know, we've really had a lot of success with the result of how many residents actually responded, which was amazing in large. That's because of the city and LRS, and together, we, we did a lot of communications. We posted the videos, you know, sent out mailers, and the city has been amazing at just also doing the different connection, or direct connect and things like that. So I just want to say thank you to the city staff. Outstanding, outstanding staff. Just like, I mean, it's incredible. When you're, when you're switching out this many carts, you've got choices on top of it. We're custom doing things, stickers and everything else, so very, very pleased with the city. So our supervisors, our customer service, they're all saying how well-received this program has been. I don't know if you're hearing the same thing. Of course, there's always going to be some people that it won't be perfect for. But overall, I mean, I've heard from every resident that I've spoken to at the end of our conversation, they're very happy with the program in general. So we were very fortunate as well to pick up some of the former advanced disposal waste management drivers. And so this was the first as well, not, not that we were able to get those drivers, but the reason was because they love the city of Darien. And so I thought that was pretty amazing as well. So we did have a pain point, and we're still kind of getting through the end of that, which, which really, it was just a few hundred carts. Unfortunately, it's the senior-sized carts. So we had a hiccup with the delay in the delivery in large because we ordered a special custom base for the wheels, because I did not want them tipping over, and that was an issue we've had in the past with some other carts that we've ordered. So it, that, the parts were delayed essentially, and that's what the delay has been. So we do have some seniors that, you know, waited a little longer, maybe a few more that are still waiting, and we hope to finish those up pretty quick. We knocked out quite a bit today as well. So from here, you know, we did offer, in response to that hiccup, we are going to cover both electronic waste events, so the city does not have to cover that cost. So that would be covered by LRS. So I did want to mention just a few things. We've now gotten through the first transition phase, or the second, I'll call it. We're heading into the final stage, so this is with the exchanges, you know, people will call and submit requests for exchanges. So please understand, we don't have a stock or an inventory of, you know, close to, it could be 1,500 to 4,000 carts. So those we place an order for. So that order will come in, and we'll start delivering as soon as they do. In the meantime, and this is where it gets a little uncomfortable for some residents, we ask you to leave the carts out at the curb. That is super important. And that's because, you know, we're going to order as, as the carts come in, or we're going to deliver as soon as the carts come in, and then we'll begin, hopefully, we'll be done after that. So I did want to report too, on Friday, we did not have one missed pickup phone call, which was outstanding. It's, it's the first that I've ever had that, you know, in large, it's probably because we were able to pick up some of these awesome drivers. But we also sent out a driver on Saturday just to make sure there were no missed pickups. So I just want to extend, you know, that, that our drivers are working very hard to make sure that this goes extremely well for you. So another reminder for the city residents, those 18-gallon bins, you know, they're welcome to put them out. So I'm, I just want to say that to you guys in case you speak to them as well. We will recycle those. I had a question come up, can I stack them? Because a lot of people have more than one. Just stack them, put a note on it to say, "Please take entire bin," and we'll take them and recycle them. So, and then just another reminder, I want to, because this will come up as well. There was a billing situation with the previous service provider. Apparently, they had billed for an additional quarter. So I just want to encourage residents, if they still have any questions regarding that, to contact Waste Management. I happen to have the number memorized. It is 800-796-9696, so they can call that number. We won't be sending out our bills probably until the end of May, so that, that's going to be a little different as well. That's the first bill, and then it'll seem like they're getting billed right away. But the reason we do that is because we get so many requests for exchanges, and we do have quite a bit, even though, you know, we had 70% of residents submit requests. We still have 30% that, you know, may have received a 95-gallon cart, and, you know, we're going to be exchanging those, and then the bill would reflect that as well. So in, in short, it's not been perfect, but overall, I think that it's gone very well. And I wanted to thank you for your communications as well. I know, as you mentioned, Alderman Gustafson, we did have that issue, and I thank you for allowing that. And also Alderman Sullivan, I saw an email from you as well. But again, we'll continue to stay really close and in contact with everything, and you'll have my full attention, and also my municipal coordinator, and George. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but...
Well, you know, I don't know, six months ago or so, or nine months ago, you know, we were in here trying to convince the, the city to give us an opportunity, to give us a chance, and you did. And we are grateful, and we do not want to disappoint you. And I think I was out the last two, two collection days myself, driving around, checking the town out. And I could tell you, I spent a lot of time in the community before, you know, deciding how we were going to competitively bid this municipality. It is so much nicer looking with the carts and not having the little tubs with the, you know, as we've talked about, the litter and the debris kind of going all over the place. Seeing it uniform really makes your collection day look so much kind of neat, if you will. And I know that we do have some, some people that are, you know, like, "I got the wrong size." But 70%, 70% participation rate when they're choosing their cart is actually unheard of. And a lot of it, I would put to the credit of, you know, you know, the city, the video that was put out there was fantastic. And, and also, I want to give some credit to Katie, you know, I mean, she's done a fantastic job on our side, I think, to handle a lot of the hot topic issues, the, the quick response, making sure that you get the right service that you, that you're looking for. We consider you a very key municipality that we have a lot of, you know, hopes for. And I just want to say, the crew that I've seen picking up, the two from the previous hauler, they were very excited to stay on board. They had brand-new equipment that they were excited about. Another one was from Roy Strom before. I've known him for the past 10 years. Probably the best swing driver, meaning he's jumped on every single different route there is, and has done a fantastic job. And he said, "Finally, I've got my own town. I'll be in here every single day. I don't have to go from each truck to each truck. I'm so excited." And then the last guy's been with LRS for, you know, significant years. So I came back, I called Katie right after I left. I said, "Man, they got the best crew I think I could ask for, anybody could ask for." So I just want to say thank you. You know, I asked for a little patience for some residents that may experience a slight discomfort. But in all reality, when you look at the long road ahead, it's, it's given you great uniform look on your day of collection. It's a beautiful set out. You know, you see the, the nice carts and the nice new trucks, and you have a great crew. So for some slight discomfort for a week or two, realistically, I would take that any day of the week if I could get, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years of a, a great relationship. So I just want to personally thank you, thank Katie, and thank your residents for their patience.
Brian, here, one question, either one of you. We are still seeing some waste management totes left out, and we do have a contact that, you know, we, we, if we get calls in, we tell them. But at some point, they're just going to be there. So those should be a bulk, if a resident wants to get rid of the, you know, the taller ones, and waste does not pick them up, that would be a bulk item?
If Waste Management is not willing to come and reach, yes, then I would say they could put it out, and we will recycle it.
Yes, okay.
And we would want it empty. So if you want us to recycle it, it needs to be empty. If you put garbage in it, and, you know, then it would be unfortunately thrown away, but it does happen, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. Yeah, thank you for asking that. Yes.
I just had a couple quick questions. The first is, and this is ones I've been getting from the residents, what happens if you fill up the garbage bin? Can you, I mean, what can you do at that point? Can you put something outside the bin?
Yes, yes. So there's a couple things. I know some residents still have their own containers, so certainly use your own container if you have it. If you just have a loose bag outside, and this is something we spoke about before we even, you know, finalized our, we were still negotiating, yes, just put the extra bag out.
Okay.
Yes.
And in respect to lawn waste, if people don't have the, the specified cart, can they just put out their own garbage can?
They can, and I do, and I...
Or a bag?
Yes, and I apologize because this was my fail. I did not include this on the webpage, and I'm getting it added. So is, I think it's 32 or 33 gallons, I mean, somewhere in there. Then just, and there are stickers that the city has that we've provided, and we'll continue to replenish those. It just says, "Yard waste only," and you can use your own container, and that's absolutely fine.
And one email I got from the, the lady who didn't, was still waiting for her cart.
Okay.
It was coming back to me constantly.
Yes.
And she came back at the end. She goes, "You know, I was thinking about it, and everything that's going on in the Ukraine, I can wait a couple of days for my cart." But that was sweet.
Well, good. Yes, that's awesome.
If I could share a story, on Friday, Katie stopped by the office. We had a woman who had a 32-gallon container. And as most of you know, when you got them, the lids didn't close all the way right away. And this woman, I guess, was becoming a little impatient, though the lid wasn't quite closing. And she continued to call to let us know that. And Katie came here to City Hall. She picked up a 32-gallon container here, took it to the lady's house, dropped it off at the lady's house, and took the one where the lid wouldn't close. So I mean, she went out on her own to do that, to remedy the situation. And to me, that, I just find that really impressive, that you guys would reach out like that and extend yourself to do stuff like that. So thank you very much for that.
And one, one last thing. I really hope now, you know, in this, that, you know, since we're a couple things, we're getting away from hopefully having a lot of the recycle stuff blow around all over. Plus, though, we also now have people that used to use stickers before, or didn't use stickers, throw their garbage along Manning Road constantly. And also going over to the AmVets at Walmart and taking big, large white bags of lawn clippings and dumping them at the AmVets. Okay? So this, your program, I think now, there's not going to be the incentive for them to do that anymore, because they're going to be paying that fee to the mouths that use the service, rather than dumping all this stuff throughout the city. So I'm really hoping things get cleaned up, because I mentioned the Dan Gomback, he's looking at now. Some of the wetlands in Darien right now are a disaster. There is mess all through all of them. So I'm hoping that this is going to also improve that, improve that too as we go forward.
I'm very confident that it will. I mean, you know, the structure of the old program, while it was good at the time, you know, it, it did eventually promote people to take advantage.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that is basically what you're saying, and what happened. I've had a number of people tell me, "You know, I used to just take my garbage to work." I mean, it's a very common, I've heard it over and over again, and, "Well, now you don't have to. You can just put it out, and we'll pick it up."
Or they dump it on Manning Road.
Or they don't.
Which is really, I'm telling you, it gets bad, as Dan knows. His team goes down there, drives down there and stop constantly picking up all the garbage.
I think our, I think our next option is going to be to provide a can through LRS on a scheduled day and just put it on Manning Road.
I think we should.
And then we're going to put a note on there, "Please deposit."
Yeah.
That's all there is to it. So Katie, I haven't saw you there yet, but that's my upcoming plan.
We may have to do that.
Yeah, and I, I think too, like, and I know a lot of my neighbors have commented how excited they are about the covered recycling cans. I mean, I've had a cart, recycling cart for a long time. But I'm a walker with my dog, so I walk through a lot of my ward, and I also border like, you know, 55 there. And on a windy day, it's, I mean, it's, the debris is unbelievable. And I have a wetlands across the street from me, and it's, no one's fly dumping, and it, it's strictly people's garbage out of their cans that don't have covers, or their recycle bins that don't, that just go airborne. And so I'm, I'm hopeful now that there'll be so much more, you know, less litter because of the, you know, the quality of the cans and everything being covered, so.
Well, and two, you know, just another, to piggyback on that, something that just kind of came to mind is, you know, if you think about it, the garbage trucks aren't going to be in your town, in the city as much now. So, because we're just, you know, we've got the automated function. So, you know, you're, where before, they were having to get out, go grab those recycle bin. They're dumping it, things are flying out, and that, those days are over. So, yes.
What I like is no more 20 after 6:00 in the morning on Wednesday mornings, going to Jewel, because I don't, I don't have any stickers. You know?
Thank you.
And then I can...
Going to my neighbor's door, and it's like, "You got an extra sticker?"
And I don't, and I don't, and I never brought the garbage out the night before, because it was blown on the block. Now I can bring the garbage out the night before and don't even worry about it.
Yep.
And one, one last thing really quickly was, you know, we, we thought it would be really easy to find a staging yard for all these carts close to Darien or in Darien. And it ended up becoming a very challenged, to say the least. We had a lot of open real estate, strip malls and all that stuff that we thought we would easily get a spot. And it came down to almost like the day before, or the, a couple of days before, the carts were going to be delivered, and we found Marquette Manor Baptist Church. I connected with Suzie Sherman, the business manager there, and, you know, we said, "Hey, we're willing to pay rent, whatever it takes." You know, we, we really are desperate. And she says, "Well, you know, we're not in Darien." And I was like, "Oh, well, you know, maybe be a good neighbor." She goes, "We, that's what we want to be. We want to be a good neighbor to the community, and so we're willing to donate this space to you." We actually needed more space than they really kind of wanted to give, I believe. And I just wanted to be on record how grateful we are to them, being a good neighbor, demonstrating, being a good steward. And without their assistance, honestly, this would not have come close, because we would have been pulling these probably from Forest View or Maywood, and it would have made so much more challenging for us. So I just want to say thank you so much to them, a good neighbor to your city, and a great, you know, church to help out.
I'm going to, I'm going to piggyback on it, because last year, because of the pandemic, when the Rotary Club of Downers Grove was holding Grow Fest, they had to move the dates. And the, the date was always, they would take the trucks and put them at the, the high schools. Well, because of, it was so late, the schools were open, they couldn't do it. Marquette Manor Church allowed them to... Marquette Manor Church allowed them to put their trucks, and put their trucks for, uh, Grow Fest in their lot, so that's not the first time I've heard of it.
They're, they're, they're a great neighbor. Very, very, very gracious.
Brian, just two things, um, as we started down this, this seems now a quick journey, but, you know, we did talk about, oh, how are we going to let residents know, and that's very challenging, I think, you know, we both really worked hard at that, and when I was out on Friday, it was interesting to see, I saw a few houses that have mattresses out, and they, they covered them in plastic. That's a minutia of the pickup, that residents are definitely reading the material or watching the videos, I was really impressed to see that. Um, I don't know that we, you know, that, that's something I think relatively new, but that was an indication that residents, you know, we are, we were able to reach them, that, um, that's really good. And the last item again is thanks for the, uh, the recycling event. The city had budgeted, uh, about nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars for that event, and, um, thanks again for, uh, picking that up, but maybe you could just talk for a minute about that, uh, Katie, because I know a brochure will be out, and if you have anything to add now, while we're on.
Yes, thank you. So in the next couple of weeks, residents will receive a postcard, and it will have information, how to register for the e-waste event, it's pretty simple, you just go on our website, lrsrecycles.com/derian, and click on the e-waste link, and you'll be able to select a certain amount of items that you want to place out, it's up to seven items, and, um, you know, it's, these are materials that you can't put out in your, in your garbage. And, um, the week of May second, we will be picking that up on the service day, so we look, that's the first event, and I don't know that we have the second one scheduled yet, do we? I can't remember.
I think it's, it's September.
It is September, sorry, thank you.
September.
That's pathetic, sorry. Um, but yes, then the second one will be in September, it'll be exactly the same. So if you missed the first one, we still have the second one. If you've got a lot of e-waste, then there you go.
We'll put all that information out again like we did.
And direct connect and- Yes, yes.
Do you do anything special with the hard drives and the computers?
We do, we, yes.
That's the question I'm getting, do they get destroyed?
Yes, we do use E-Works out of Elk Grove Village, and if you look up E-Works, it is one of the few, if not the only, in Northern Illinois that has a, a very secure program that they operate under, it's called R2, and it is this very specific data destruction, um, security, sort of cer, certification that's required, you know, it's an, it's an, definitely guaranteed that it'll be wiped.
Yeah, I think that's important.
It is very important, residents are often concerned.
That's a great selling point, that's a great selling point to have that.
Anything else for Katie or George? Well, we're going to continue down this path for, uh, for a while, and, uh, again, my thanks to both of you.
Thank you.
Uh, I could not have imagined five months ago that we'd be here today, it seemed like, uh, you know, we had a lot of meetings, put out a lot of information, and you know what? It was all worthwhile, it really was.
Thank you so much.
Because I think we really have a quality company, and I think our residents, as I said in my newsletter last week, no change comes about without some disruptions. I said, but eventually people are going to see why we chose this path, and why we, why we chose LRS, and I think that's going to be happening pretty soon, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, very much.
Okay, Chief, all yours.
Awesome.
Tonight we have Brian and Christina Payne with us, special citizens commendation.
Yes, uh, on, um, February fifth, at about six o'clock, um, police were dispatched to a accident with injuries, and, uh, vehicles were on fire. And luckily, um, Brian Payne had a fire extinguisher that his wife told him to go get. He honored that request, as we all do, and, uh, promptly went out and put out the fire because there was a couple of people that were trapped in the car. Christina, uh, during all that, um, saw the people in distress, and, uh, found a coat and, uh, to keep them, uh, warm, and, uh, rendered aid. So, in the police department, we have commendations and the letters of appreciation and different awards for life-saving and valor and different types of things, and we also have a citizen award, so, uh, today I'd like to issue those two citizen awards.
Can't leave without a picture, come on.
We should put Mary's seat over there.
Yeah, right?
Congratulations, thank you so much.
It's like putting on a tractor fire, right? It's like putting on a tractor fire.
Free job, no problem.
Uh, just one last thing on any of the mayor's report. Uh, on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth of, uh, March, uh, Brian and I went down to Springfield for two days of lobbying with the state legislature. Uh, we, um, I had, uh, several meetings, one, I, I led a group of mayors, uh, in a meeting with Representative Jim Durkin, and then I led a group of, uh, mayors in a group, uh, setting with Representative Welch, who is the Speaker of the House. Our purpose was to go down there and speak to restoring of the local government distributive fund from six percent to eight percent, and as most of you know, uh, we received ten percent of that every year up until two thousand and eleven. Back in nineteen sixty-nine, the state, the governor made, uh, an agreement with, uh, local municipalities that when they instituted the state income tax, that the municipalities would receive ten percent of that per capita. Uh, and that remained that way up to two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and eleven, that changed, and it was reduced, and it currently sits at six point six percent. Now, to give you an idea of what that means to Darien, Darien currently receives two point five million dollars in, uh, local government distributive funds. If we, uh, pushed that up to eight percent, Darien would receive an additional five hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. If they went back to the ten percent, we'd be a little over a million dollars. If we had stayed at ten percent, we wouldn't, we, by not staying at ten percent, we lost over ten million dollars in funds over the last ten years. So, uh, it's been a concerted effort, uh, those of you who are aware, I participated in an editorial with the editorial board of the Chicago Sun-Times, I did one with the Daily Herald, uh, and as Vice President of DuPage Mayors and Managers, I was selected to meet with various state legislators down, down in Springfield. Also had an opportunity to meet with the governor, we had a forty-minute meeting with Governor Pritzker, there were about twelve of us in the, in his private conference room, and when it came around for me to speak, uh, it happened to be my birthday that day, and I looked at him and I thanked him for, uh, the opportunity for us to talk and meet with him, and then I looked at him and I said, today's my birthday, Mr. Governor, and my wish is that you restore LGDF to eight percent. And he looked at me and he smiled, he goes, just for Darien, Joe, and I said, no, for the state. And then, and he says, well, happy birthday anyway. We'll know this Friday whether or not our efforts had any significant impact, although I've been reading, um, material put out by our lobbyists, and I have to say that DuPage Mayors and Managers has one of the best lobbyists, and Brian was part of this, I think he'll, he'll substantiate that, uh, Matt O'Shea was able to bring legislators to us to meet and talk to throughout the two-day period. Uh, but whether or not we get anything back from the state this year, uh, is another question. The money's there, it's a great year to ask for the money, and my hope is we get something from the state, if we don't, we're going to start this whole effort up again next year until we get ten percent. Uh, and, that's money that, that is our taxpayers' money, that is Darien residents' money. So, um, but unfortunately, people have never heard of LGDF, and we did, we've done everything we can to convince them to call their state legislators, and the bill that's before the state has seventy-eight representatives, members of the House of Representatives, and over forty senators supporting the bill, and the problem is, that bill will not come up for a vote. If it came up for a vote, it would be passed unanimously, but it's not going to come up for a vote. So we have to hope that in the budget-making process, that we get something from that. But I wanted to fill you in a little bit on, uh, what took place. Uh, Mr. Vanna did some lobbying on his own, uh, he met with, uh, we met with members of DE, DCEO. And IDOT, and we talked about the sound wall, and we talked about, uh, the rubbish along, uh, I-55, along, and the damage to the fences. We actually met with the Director of IDOT, who gave Brian his card and told him, if you have any problems with that, give them a call and he'll get it cleaned up, he'll assign a crew to, to do that. But, uh, it was a very fruitful two days, uh, I'm really, was really glad that my city administrator was able to join me, we had a good time, but we were busy from the moment we got there till the moment we got on the bus and we came home. But I wanted to let, I wanted to let all of you know that it was a worthwhile two days, and in the future, uh, I'd like to see several of you go. Naperville not only had their, uh, didn't have their mayor there, but I think they had four or five of their council members who attended, so in the future, I'd like to have some of you go, I think you really would enjoy it. But that's, um, that's my report on that. And with that, uh, we'll go to, um, City Clerk's report, Joanne.
No report this evening.
City Administrator's report?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Uh, Department head information and questions, anything for Dan Gombeck or Chief Thomas? Anything you gentlemen would like to offer? Oh, Eric, go ahead.
And I mentioned this before, Dan, I know we're taking, taking a look at, uh, cleaning up the, the wetlands, and, uh, this, this is probably the worst I've seen it now. My wife and I just walk, we walk by there all the time on the way to, uh, Home Depot with our dog and stuff, and it's just, it's just, at the, at the end of Abbey Lane, the cul-de-sac there, and then once you get into the, on the Walmart area, especially behind, the Amvets, I don't know if stuff's coming from them or not, but it's just a disaster in there.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's been some management changes with their maintenance company over the last, uh, three months, so, uh, we've had a couple of challenges, if you want to say, with the detention facility itself, uh, which began to overflow, so we got there, finally rectified. So it's a ma, it's a little bit of a learning curve, I guess some of the, uh, management and their, uh, maintenance people are not familiar with the grounds in totality in which they believe it was all Darien, so, uh, we're working with them, first of all. Abbey Woods, I know is, uh, they have a private homeowners association, so, um, you know, we'll give them a little bit of benefit at Dell with spring, and all the high winds that we've had in recent, probably two months, um, so, we'll, we'll get an afternoon as well, send a courtesy letter out to make sure that the, uh, homeowners association is aware of, hey, you know, let's police the grounds a little more, and then we'll take-
I mean, it's pretty wet right now, I understand that, so it may take a little bit of time for it to dry up a little bit, for people to get in there.
Yes.
And actually clean it up, so, but yeah, that would be very helpful, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Mary?
Um, just to piggyback, because, um, I have some of those special service areas over in my ward, in fact, one was, is directly across the street from my home, and we do, like, ourselves, you know, just do some tidying up, but I, I do think there'd be an advantage to somebody, like, going in and, and cleaning it, and I also think, um, it's on the hopper for controlled burn, um, so you wouldn't, you know, it'd be nice to have the garbage out of there before they do that. Who, whose responsibility would that be? Because we don't have a homeowners association.
Correct, while you don't have a homeowners association, there's a special service agreement, or, especially, yeah, special service agreement, which, uh, allows the city of Darien to basically oversee and control, you know, have the controlled burns, you know, through contract, I think currently we have a five-year contract in place for the burns. Uh, there is no specific line item for garbage, and I know in the past, that residents have taken it upon themselves to more or less police the area. I do know that when they schedule a burn, they're cognizant of the garbage and do not burn garbage, that I'm aware of, um, so they do, I'll call a little bit of a special pickup. Uh, if this is something that you'd like us to look at, uh, whether it be on, we could have a separate sidebar conversation in regards to a timing, uh, whether it's once a month, once a quarter, whatever the case is, but let's have a conversation in regards to that and see what the level of detail is, and we can go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Uh, that takes us to the Treasury report, warrant number twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, Mike.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, yes, uh, this evening, I'm requesting Council's approval of warrant number twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, so symmetrical, uh, from the listed funds in the amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents, as well as payroll for the period ended March twenty-fourth, in the amount of two hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy cents, for a total be approved of five hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Motion to approve, Alderman Schauer, second by Alderman Kenny. Questions or comments for the Treasurer? If none, the roll.
Schauer?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant's been approved, takes us to standing committee reports, do any of the aldermen have information for us tonight? Uh, Alderwoman Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor, um, the Economic Development Committee will meet this Thursday, April seventh, at seven PM in council chambers, and the Administrative Finance Committee will have its next meeting on Monday, May second, at six PM in the conference room upstairs at City Hall.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the Next Municipal Services Committee meeting will be on April the twenty-fifth, uh, Monday at six PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny?
Excuse me, Alderman Belzak, uh, Mr. Mayor, we're going to probably be updating the, uh, Municipal Services to the eighteenth, okay? We just need to confirm a couple of agenda items to make sure that the all elected officials-
We need to get them on the eighteenth agenda?
Correct, yes, yes, so again, this was just information that just came back recently, I haven't had, not had a chance to discuss them with the elected officials on that committee, so that, that'll be forthcoming, and we'll let, uh, the city clerk know as well in regards to the schedule upon confirmation, thank you.
Chief, do you anticipate having agenda items for the eighteenth?
No.
So we're going to probably can't, we're going to-
What time was it, six o'clock, six fifteen, nine five? No, I, um, originally we were pushing-
Put it in line.
I copy your about time tonight.
Okay, correct.
All right, so we're going to probably cancel the police committee meeting on the eighteenth, so we can have the, um, Municipal Services meeting on that, at six o'clock on that day, okay?
Six o'clock, Tom, I mean, Jill, yeah.
And the Darien- The Darien Community Action Team will be meeting this Saturday, April ninth, uh, from ten to twelve at the Indian Prairie Public Library. Uh, takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related, we don't have anyone in the audience except for, I think, Mr. Giuliani, unless he has a question he wants to ask, he doesn't have one, so we'll move on to old business, there being no old business, we go to our consent agenda. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Darien and Go Painters Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-two fire hydrant painting, Phase Two, at a unit cost of ninety-six thousand dollars for an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, or ninety-six dollars, excuse me, for an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, six hundred. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution, accepting a proposal from Norwalk Tank Company for storm sewer concrete structures, iron sewer grates, concrete adjusting rings at the proposed unit prices for various public works projects for a period of May first, two thousand and twenty-two, through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution, authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the professional design services related to the surveying and preparation of plans and bid documents for the neighborhood sidewalks for the east side of Clardon Hills Road from Sixty-seventh Street to Plainfield Road, at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. And item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution, authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Christopher B. Burke for professional design services related to the surveying, engineering, and bid documents for the neighborhood sidewalk for the south side of Seventy-Ninth Street from Cass Avenue Stratford Place, at a cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, five dollars. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn, and the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The consent agenda's been approved. Just for the viewing audience, we've changed the order of our new business and I'll be taking those in the new order. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one Kyocera CS 504J copier printer from Alternative Business Suppliers Incorporated to replace current equipment in use by the police department, using Department of Justice award money in an amount not to exceed 6,500 dollars. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any discussion or comments? If none, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The item's been approved. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve Option 1 for the municipal services facility at 1041 South Frontage Road. Option 1 is to maintain the current facility and grounds with no expansion. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any discussion? Go ahead, Eric.
Let me, let me be perfectly clear that, you know, I do not want to increase taxes to pay for a new municipal services building, but I think there are potential ways of going about and getting a new building. Now, a big part of that, and I keep pushing and hoping, is that we get a marijuana store in Darien. Okay, either we're going to get one Downers Grove or Woodridge. Only one of those three cities will get one. And frankly, if it's in Downers Grove or Woodridge, it's a real in Darien. So let's not fool ourselves. Let's at least get the revenue for it, because that revenue could be substantial, that could go a long way to paying for a new municipal services building. That and potentially maybe with some of those LGDF funds, we could get away with. That's why I don't want to do a lot of work on the existing building and we should know by the end of this year if we're going to get a marijuana store or not. If we don't get one by the end of this year, we're not going to get one. So if we can delay and doing these improvements and stuff, I'd rather see that so we can know what our viable options are going down the road.
Anyone else? The roll?
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Nay.
Gustafson?
No.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Five ayes and two nay.
The item's been approved. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Standard Park for trench drain troughs for the Bay areas of the municipal service building at 1041 South Frontage Road in an amount not to exceed 17,540 dollars. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower. And discussion? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
No.
Clistic?
Nay.
Kenny?
Aye.
Five ayes and two nay.
Item's been approved. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Ford as Concrete for the purchase and installation of the concrete floor for the trench drains in an amount not to exceed 9,500 dollars. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. And again, any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Nay.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Gustafson?
No.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Five ayes and two nay.
The item's been approved. And finally, it takes us to our last item, item E, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance approving the 2022-2023 budget as amended. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Questions or comments?
Mayor, you might want to mention what, why we're amending those two items.
Yes, the reason that we use the phrase "as amended," when we voted for these several items here on the new business agenda, we were actually adding money to the capital projects for those items that we approved. So that has to be included within the budget, so we have to amend the budget as needed. Any other? And I just want to say thank you to city staff for the hard work on the budget. I want to thank the council for your diligence and the time you spent. Alderwoman Sullivan for her leadership of the audit and finance, administrative finance committee. We finished our budget process in two items, which speaks to the specificity which we use in creating the budget. And many thanks to Mr. Vanna, our city administrator, and to Lisa Clem, who work tirelessly to prepare the documents for us. And as to our department chairs as well, Chief Thomas and Mr. Gombach in their preparation of their materials, all that adds to the process that we concluded. And we, we did it in what I consider a timely fashion and we have what I believe is an outstanding budget, including the sidewalks along 69th Street, the sidewalks along Clarden Hills Road from 67th to Plainfield, the light at 67th and Clarden Hills Road, among other items. So many thanks to the council. Mary?
Not to be redundant, but I want to echo Joe's comments. I'm very proud of the process. I think we as a council had some great discussions, but did it in a very efficient manner. I want to thank the mayor and city administrator Vanna, our department heads, the amazing support staff, Lisa Clem and Julie, all the people, Treasurer Corin. I think we should be very proud of this budget. We, you know, are looking at some great programs moving forward, very many popular ones, some new opportunities with the traffic light and the sidewalks, but also being able to really continue our rear yard drainage programs and, you know, continuing to do all of this without having to lean on our taxpayers for any more money. And I think we should be, you know, hanging our heads or hanging, you know, holding our heads, I should say, very high. And, you know, we continue to operate the city as elected officials and with the support of an amazing staff in a very efficient and effective manner. So just wanted to thank everybody, you know, one great team, we made this happen.
Anything else?
One item here. In addition to the camera under the amendment for 83.5 and the 100,000 for Public Works, considering LRS now is going to pick up the recycling, electronic recycling, I would deduct the 19,200 from the budget, so I'll make that third.
Right. And again, I want to restate that. LRS, because of the few minor things that have taken place, LRS is offering to pick up that 19,200 this year, which really speaks to the quality of the company that we're dealing with.
Well, we decided to pay for it initially ourselves, it worked out good this way. Back.
Nice little gift from them.
So we have a motion and a second. Alderman Clistic?
A motion, also the sidewalks, great. Currently at that bus stop there on 79th Street, you got kids getting on in the middle of the street. So this will address that problem, so I think this is great that sidewalks-
It's a good budget.
-finally put in there.
And the roll?
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Item's been approved. Any, anything for the, for the good of the council? Anybody have, Eric?
Yeah, and as I've mentioned at the last few meetings, it's Center Cast, School District 66, has a potential tax increase. The next meeting is April 21st at Lakeview School. Just to remind people, you can now go out on DuPage County's website and get a mail-in ballot. You are now able to go out there and do that. I did that for myself, so those are available to you. So I encourage everybody to vote.
Anyone else?
And the elect, do you want to remind people of the date of the election?